We'll go ahead and get going. Are we recording? Council, I will call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, at six oh two P M. We will begin tonight's city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow?
Here.
Councilwoman Schrader?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burn?
Here.
Mayor Sinison?
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll ask Councilman Borton to please lead us in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Unless I hear otherwise, it looks like our agenda is set for this evening. I would move approval of the agenda as presented. As published.
I have a motion section, second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Cork, should we have anybody sign up on their future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then we will move directly into action items. Um, item, if we open up, action item five A, public hearing for Franklin Storage, eight thousand and twenty twenty dash zero zero three three. And I will turn this over to Joe for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. The first project before you tonight is for Franklin Storage, item number five A. This site consists of five point one four three acres of land currently zoned R U T and located near the half mile mark between South Eagle Road and South Cloverdale on the north side of Franklin Road. The proposed annexation is for these five acres of land and a requested zoning designation of I L, which is light industrial. And this application is only for annexation and zoning and the associated new development agreement, not a plat. As noted, the subject site is labeled as general industrial in the City of Meridian Comprehensive Plan. This future land use designation allows a range of uses, including warehouses, light manufacturing, flex space, and storage units. The applicant has provided a concept plan depicting a self-storage facility that staff is not approving with this application. Staff believes that tying this annexation and subsequent D A to a specific site plan could create difficulty for both staff and developers in the future. For example, if the concept idea were to change, as markets sometimes dictate, staff believes that a site that is only annexed and zoned I L is a better fit for the City of Meridian than a property that is tied to a specific self-storage site plan. Staff supports this annexation and zoning but does not believe a self-storage facility is the highest and best use of the site. Thus, this annexation will be recommended to not be tied to a specific site plan. This applicant intends to develop the site as a self-storage facility, which is a principally permitted use in the I L zoning district. As stated above, staff does not see this as the highest and best use of the property. Nonetheless, staff has reviewed and analyzed the submitted concept plan but will not be providing conditions of approval to correct any issues noticed. Instead, staff offered these comments within the analysis of the staff report. Access to this site is proposed via extension of an industrial collector way, East Lanark Street, which bisects a property. Uh, direct lot access to East Franklin Road will be prohibited, except for an emergency access that is required to meet the two points of access requirement for the specific use standards of self-storage. East Lanark Street bisects the subject property, as noted, and therefore requires the property to be subdivided prior to future development. Because of this, the city will have the opportunity to fully analyze and condition the site plan that will be submitted with that application or any future subdivision application. In addition, any new industrial or commercial building will also be required to apply for certificate, certificate of zoning compliance and administrative design review, which gives staff yet another opportunity to review the site and its design. East Franklin Road is designated as an entryway corridor on the master street map. Because of this designation, buildings should be held to a higher standard than the traditional design standards for industrial buildings. Staff has previously required adjacent industrial buildings to adhere to the commercial building design standards rather than just the industrial. Therefore, staff also is recommending a deep provision that any future buildings on this site comply with the commercial architectural design standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard these items on May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, and recommended approval of the applicant's request for annexation and zoning. The main points of discussion of this were the applicant's desire to only annex and not develop at this time, and also the flexibility of not tying annexation to the submitted concept plan. And with that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Joe at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I was a little confused on this one. There's been a long practice of not doing annexations without plats or at least concept plans to tie it to. And I couldn't figure out, in light of the request, why, why is there an ask to annex this property now?
Thank you, Mr. Borton. Um, the main point is they, they do at this current time intend to do self-storage. But again, as I stated in my staff report, I, and we've all stated, another self-storage facility is not necessarily what we want. That's why I'm not tying it to this specific site plan. I, we do need more industrial zoning. And if things tend to change and we can use that industrial zoning for something else, even the applicant has stated that they're open to doing that, uh, maybe doing different things on the site. And at this time, they are not yet prepared to offer a very specific site plan or preliminary plat for that. Um, if East Lanark Street didn't bisect the property, then they wouldn't have to plot it. Um, technically, they could just do all the buildings on one lot. However, because of that, they're gonna have to at least subdivide it there. But, um, further subdivision may occur if they wanna do different types of uses on the property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Uh, I don't mean to speak for Councilman Borton, but I, I guess maybe also what he's asking or what I'm understanding is, what would be the purpose of the city taking on this responsibility from, from a service standpoint? If there isn't a concept plan or an intention of the applicant to move forward in the near future? And I apologize for my simple question, but...
Yeah, no.
That's...
Thank you, Councilmember Perrow. There, uh, it's not a simple question. I understand. It's, I don't know exactly the timeline of when the applicant intends to subdivide the property, but I know that it's not a five-year plan or anything like that. There is an intention to do it sooner rather than later. I could have tied this to the concept plan, but I decided not to because I'd rather have an opportunity to maybe work with the applicant and get some type of other use, maybe some more flex space and not just self-storage on the site. So that, that was more of my reasoning behind not requiring the concept plan with it. I, I think there could be some more massaging that me and the applicant can do to, to better, better benefit the city than just more self-storage.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Joe. So it looks like on page ten that we do adopt a, a development agreement as part of this, but it is, the A shall, I'm quoting from that, had a minimum incorporate the following provisions. And it looks like it's just referencing to the extension of Lanark sidewalks, turning radiuses, all the minimum things that need for that property, whether it's storage or whatever else it might be. Is, is that correct? Do I read that correctly?
Mr. Hoagland, yes, that is correct. Yeah, as of right now, because there's not a specific site plan, um, just those basic needs. I could have required certain other things with regards to the concept plan that was submitted, but because I'm not tying it to the concept plan, I found that that would just be a waste. Cause if it were to be subdivided or a different use came, we'd just have to strike all those out anyways.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Joe, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, I'm calling you for the questions for staff, Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Joe, so I know that this, this came up at, at P and Z. Can you summarize for council what conversations you've had with the applicant since planning and zoning before tonight? Uh, and your comments are, kinda suggest that you wanted to continue to work with the applicant on some of these particular pieces. I'm just curious what has happened since P and Z prior to today.
Councilmember Cavanagh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, um, no specific additional conversations have happened since Planning and Zoning Commission, um, other than a brief discussion in email where he had, uh, he had thanked us, you know, for our time. And then he had stated that he could intend to see some flex space on, with storage here, or even some type of commercial use closer to, um, Franklin, depending on the use. Uh, again, nothing specific has been discussed, but, uh, Mr. Hatch, the applicant is, and from what I understand, the owner of the property is very willing to do something other than just storage. They, they too would like to see more than one use on the property. And I apologize, I don't have any more specific answers to that, sir.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Joe, the, the omission of conditions of approval, you know, kinda caught me off guard. And I'm just, my assumption is that's not something the applicant requested. That's something that, on an administrative level, the decision was made to not provide that?
Councilmember Cavanagh, uh, yes, sir. That is, um, again, the reason why I didn't do that is because I'm not tying it to the site plan. If I tied it to the site plan, there would be conditions of approval related to the site plan. But because there isn't one and it's just gonna be annexing the land, um, let's say they only developed the southern portion, regardless when they extend East Lanark, they're going to have to subdivide, they're gonna have to do some type of plat. That will require other conditions of approval. And then on top of that, there will be a C Z C and design review, which will have other conditions of approval regarding whatever use is proposed. But that was intentional.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I guess maybe a question, and I'm not sure if it should be directed toward planning staff or maybe legal, but by potentially approving an annexation without those conditions and with this general zoning, but no real specifics, is there, is there a trade-off? Is there something that, that we're giving up that we would normally get in terms of the, you know, real discretion with an annexation? I, just curious if there's any feedback on that, or if we just feel pretty confident that at a staff level, there's so much oversight during these further phases that were covered.
Councilwoman Schrader, uh, thank you for your question. It's, just annexing in, uh, if they don't develop it, there should not be any additional cost to the city services. It's just gonna sit there and continue to be vacant, you know? Um, more than that, if they, when they decide to develop it, you know, we, we're gaining another five acres of I L zoning, which we desperately need in the city right now. And that, as I discussed in my staff report, that is part of the reasoning of me not approving this concept plan of self-storage. I, I think that, you know, Mr. Hatch stated specifically in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that he is also willing to work and provide some other uses on the site too. So I, I think that there's potential to get something better than just more storage facilities on site. And if we just annex, we do leave that flexibility in there versus if, yes, he could have come in with a plat to subdivide it, but it, it's not necessarily the, the end of the road. We're not losing anything by making them come back and having to do that again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, councilor, maybe to add on to what Joe said, I, I don't think this would be wise in other types of, of zones with residential and such. That's why you always have concept plans and they are, and elevations and things that you wanna tie to, cause that's what you like. And industrial, again, there's certain uses, so I think basically what planning is saying is, we're comfortable with any uses that industrial would allow within that five acres. And it sounds like Mr. Hatch is, is also agreeable to considering some of those other things. So this is avoiding the potential need for a modification of a D A. That's really what you're avoiding right now. Because again, you've, you've got limited uses, again, in an I L, and, and we don't have that much I L in the city now, as much as we'd like. So this is really an addition of I L with, again, limited uses, so you're not at risk like you are in a residential or an office or commercial setting where you have no idea what's gonna go there. Here, you've got a list of things that are fairly limited that are gonna have to be congruent with the other adjacent I L. So I, I think this is one that, this is, makes the most sense to give that level of flexibility that you wouldn't have in some of the other, uh, annexations you'd see.
Council, any further questions for staff at this time?
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Guess just a quick follow-up to confirm that the annexation as industrial is exclusively what's listed here. So warehouses, light manufacturing, flex space, as storage, and there isn't some type of, let's say, heavy industrial use that council may not like, that could come in, that might not be compatible with adjacent residential areas?
Councilwoman Schrader, um, regardless of if they came in with a plat or any use right now, that could always change. And it would, if it comes under I L, then all of those permitted or conditional uses would be allowed. Uh, obviously with a conditional use, it would come before Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, so versus doing it now or later, it's, having the I L zoning is going to allow those uses there regardless. Um, but again, all industrial zones require a C Z C, a certificate of zoning compliance, and design review. So we will, again, have another opportunity to check what use they are proposing. It's not gonna be a free-for-all, uh, when, once it's annexed.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here with us in the official room?
Mr. Mayor.
Online.
There he is. Mr. Hatch?
Hey, do you want me to introduce myself, address, all that kinda good stuff?
Yes, if we could do your name and address for the record, you'll be recognized for fifteen minutes.
City council members and, uh, city staff, thank you for hearing our application this evening. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is two hundred West Thirty-Sixth Street in Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one four. Um, we were involved, eh, at least in some of the public hearings, uh, last fall with comprehensive plan and flume amendments and, and workshops. Uh, through, through that and a brief pre-application meeting that we had with the city, there was recommendation that we present to city council, uh, the consideration of rezoning or recommending that the comprehensive plan be adjusted to have this area be, uh, light industrial. And, uh, that presentation was well received and, and is reflected in Joe's presentation. From there, uh, and talking with, with, uh, Joe and, and staff, intent was for us to be able to annex these properties. One, because of the bigger picture of what, uh, we got out of that comprehensive, uh, workshop and, and public hearings was, you know, we, there was a lot of concern for growth and need for growth and considerations for residential development. But, um, you know, on the, on the industrial side, there's a, there's a grave need in Meridian for light industrial and the opportunity for that type of commercial development in the future. You know, is that storage, maybe? Is that flexible space for various different businesses? Maybe is that, uh, any of the other intended uses of light industrial? I think so. And so, in talking with the applicant and, and my client, uh, our intention is, is, uh, to propose light industrial and to develop that in the intent of the light industrial. And so I think, you know, based on, uh, market needs and, and businesses moving into the area, that may be an opportunity for some flex space, maybe an opportunity for storage. And it may be an opportunity for other intended uses in that light industrial. Um, but I would agree with, with Joe, uh, and, and his direction as far as trying, trying to keep this not tied to a D A. We've, uh, worked on many a D A project in the past where maybe you got a D A that has no timeline. It's been around for thirty years and has no relevance to the actual current date situation and surroundings of the area. And trying to kinda unravel that to make sense of it, in many cases, becomes very confusing, very expensive, and very convoluted. And so, you know, based on the C Z C and the design review and all of the other, uh, processes that we're going to have to go through to develop these, these, uh, you know, it will be at least two parcels in the future. Uh, we felt that, that Joe's recommendations were prudent for this, and we were in favor with the staff, uh, recommendations, uh, for this annexation. And so with that, um, we'll stand for, for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any questions for applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just one, Jeff. The question that was asked of staff, I, in fairness, will ask to you. I, the annexation by itself is extremely rare. And what, if anything, is gained by doing the annexation now as opposed to, I mean, it's, it's comp plan to be industrial. Everyone thinks it's gonna be industrial, so why annex now with no development plan? As opposed to bring an annexation application at the time you finally know what you wanna do there? I don't, I understand what the city loses to some degree by doing it in two parts. So help me understand what applicant gains by doing it this way? If anything.
I, I mean, we, we gain the ability to, to help annex industrial land into the City of Meridian. As far as, uh, you know, the, my client's, uh, intent and use, I don't, I don't know if, uh, there's any, uh, individual benefits that, that he really gains other than helping Meridian. Um, I know there was the comment about, you know, has, has this use or, and or proposed use been reviewed? And we were required to go through the same expectation as we would if, uh, this was tied to a D A. So we had to do engineering, we had to do modeling for the water and make sure that the infrastructure would be suitable for the proposed layout. Uh, would there be modifications through C Z C and, and design review? Absolutely. Um, but can the intended use be utilized on that site? Yes, and that has been ran through, uh, municipal review. So I think, uh, you know, the, the expectation, at least from my client, is that at least a portion of this would be, uh, utilized for storage. Would all of it be utilized for storage? I, I think both, uh, myself and the, uh, you know, the future owner of the property, the applicant, uh, would like to keep an open mind, uh, based on the city's needs, uh, for this property and the surrounding properties. I think the, the consideration for being able to bring this into Meridian, um, is, is something that we see benefit for future development. But to answer your question more specifically, staff, uh, recommended that we take this approach and we respect their vision and insight.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Just to clarify, the project would be tied to a D A but not a concept plan. Um, I just wanna make sure that Mr. Hatch and everybody understands that is the very clear, will be tied to a D A but not a concept plan.
Council, any other conver, questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Madam Cork, should we have anybody who's signed up to testify?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, well, and there's nobody in the room. Is there anybody online who, eh, who would like to testify? If so, if you could please, uh, indicate by raising your hand at the bottom of the screen. Uh, we do have one person who's raised her hand. If you could say your name and address for the record, and you'll be recognized for three minutes. This is for Greg.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked Greg to unmute.
I'm sorry. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I apologize. I actually did not mean to, to hit that, uh, the hand. I didn't intend to, to testify. Um, I would just echo that, uh, both what staff and Jeff Hatch have stated, and we've worked diligently with, uh, staff to come up with, um, a solution that, uh, they're very comfortable with and we're comfortable with. And so that's, that's all I have to, to report.
Greg, could you say your, your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Greg Ferney, F E R N E Y, and four five four nine North McKenzie Lane in Boise, eight three seven zero three.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? Okay, very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else with their hand raised or in the room, would the applicant like to provide any last comments on this application?
Um, I, I would just, uh, again, like to thank, uh, city council and staff. Um, you know, we don't rezone, uh, property and go through the, the workshop that, that, uh, has transpired over the last couple of years in Meridian very often. And so taking a look at this area and what would be the best zoning for that, um, you know, it was an exciting process to be involved with. And there's a lot of change in, in Meridian, which is exciting, but also takes a lot of thought and insight. So we appreciate your time, um, and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Um, before we close the public hearing, I guess to, to summarize the, the concern that I had reviewing the application, um, was just that the process in an annexation without a concept plan or a plat or something in more detail always seemed to beg the question of, you know, Councilman Rountree used to call it the, is it the right time and what's the rush? And, and I couldn't still figure out what the purpose of just doing an annexation by itself was with this one. Knowing that the comp plan says it's gonna be industrial, it's, whether it's today or it's future, it's gonna be an industrial zone. But, um, we've always liked to have the, the plat or concept plan with, with D A provisions, Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you.
You just don't know what you don't know until the future. This is the only time at the annexation process where the council mayor has a voice in what some of those details might be. And it might be small and inconsequential, but oftentimes it's more than nothing. So in benefit to the development community, we've, we've been pretty consistent saying, don't bring an annexation by itself. You run a huge risk. It's just not gonna fly. Not that it's the wrong zone or if there's anything wrong with it, we just don't have the details we need to make the decision if it's appropriate to become part of Meridian today as opposed to sometime in the future. So this one, the risk might be minimal, minimal. Uh, Mr. Nary's provided good guidance that the, the variabilities might be small, but given more than zero concern. That's why I had the initial concern. I still have it, even though it's gonna be smaller for the benefit of the community. The risk, I think, is if we, if we are open to approving annexations by themselves, sometimes and not others. We certainly don't want folks to come to this stage to find out that it's on one end of the spectrum and not on the other. They'd be right for the concern. Our staff needs to know our perspective, just simply applying. I'm extremely reluctant to approve it, but I... I'm extremely reluctant to approve it, but I understand it's pretty unique. I'm not fighting one way or the other, but at least that's a policy consideration for me. Makes annexation by itself almost.
From a process question, and I don't, can, can you tie the concept plan that's in there that's not recommended to this if you wanted to at this point in time? And I'm not saying you would want to, but I'm just saying, is that even an option to tie the concept plan that staff said not to tie to it? If council wanted to have something?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, basically the staff recommendation was simply to not tie it to the concept plan that's been submitted. I mean, that's, that's about the only one you could tie to at this point, because that's the only thing that's been noticed that was part of the application. So if that was the direction of the council, that, that although staff has advised that, that you would like it tied to that initial concept plan that was submitted, I don't see any conflict in the code to allow for that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
And I'm, I'm not advocating for that. I think if we tied it to a concept plan the developer didn't want to do, they wouldn't sign the DA.
Right.
Essentially.
It'd just all fall apart anyway. So again, it, I'm not, I don't have terrible heartburn other than the policy considerations that I've already described.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just wanted to mention to Councilman Borton, it's a little hard to hear you from time to time. You kind of are feeding a little in and out. I think we're tracking. I think we got the most of it. I share that concern as well. I, I, I guess I'd have to, I, I just haven't heard a, a great compelling reason why we have to do it this way. And I feel like we're giving up a level of control that we would normally have had, it sounds like in the past. I don't know what the harm would be in just continuing this or, you know, maybe not approving it but not creating a timeframe where they can't come back when they have more information.
Mr. Mayor, I understand the council member's concerns, I do. One part of that, I believe, is the next step would be for them to plat it, which does not require DA. So in order to help bring maybe some clarity or another opportunity for council members to add or remove DA provisions, perhaps you could recommend a DA provision that any future subdivision will require a modified DA. That gives you the opportunity to use the development agreement again to mitigate any potential issues at the future subdivision and future uses. Food for that.
Council, any additional thoughts or comments at this time? Any action item that the council would like to take on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'll force the issue just for a bit. If there was, there's a different perspective on the policy consideration, being consistent. Let's visit about it now. Again, I'm not, I've, I've said my piece. If we're all on the same page, we can be consistent, that's great. But if we're not, or there's something that I'm missing for this discussion, by all means. I, I, Joe, you're, you're being super creative on the fly, but sometimes that bites us if we're trying to round peg square hole things here at the eleventh hour as opposed to being consistent on the front end, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I just wanted to comment, yeah, I, I don't oppose the application to change it to IL zoning. I, I think all the things that are, are there. But in listening to Councilman Borton talk about the policy and our procedures and consistency, and I do like it when we are consistent. We don't surprise people, we know what the process, they know what the process is. We know how we move forward on things, so, you know, I don't, I don't have any heartburn not, not approve this and, and let them come forward at a future date to, with, with the concept that is something we could accept along with the zoning change. So, um, I, I think there's decent sideboards on it, but at the same time, if it's, we're going to be doing some things that are kind of out of character for the council historically and in the future, then I think we probably should be consistent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
In general, I am in agreement with Councilman Borton and Councilman Holton's comments. And, but I am hesitant if there is a vote that results in denial to limit their ability to come back within a year's time. So, uh, just want to keep that, it's my understanding that it would, it would prohibit them from applying within a year if, if something changed and there were half, is that right?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I think if it's a, the same or similar application, but if this is just an annexation application with almost an express request to not tie it to a concept plan, would a new, a new application of any type be new? That might alleviate the concern.
So, you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Perrow and Councilman Borton, I would agree since the, I, I guess the only concern I'd have from where the council's direction is going, it sounds like, and Joe could correct me, but from what I've read in the staff report and heard from the report tonight, the coun- the, the project came forward with this project in mind. Staff wanting to be more creative and looking for additional types of uses in the industrial zone essentially talked them out of it. And they got agreed to be, look beyond this and then not tie to concept plans. So it sounds like we talked them out of the project that they wanted to do and now the council's considering denying it. So it, it feels like it's a fairly tou- tough outcome on a fairly narrowly defined project. I agree with you, Councilman Borton, it's, it's not common for the city, but I wouldn't say it never happens. I mean, we have annexed parcels with just the idea that whatever those uses are that are allowed on that zone, that's what they can do. And so I wouldn't say we've never done it. It is very uncommon for sure. But, but that's, you're right. If, if the council denial, they come back with a plan, in, in theory, they could come back with this plan. And then there would be a new project so that it wouldn't be barred by the year. But that's kind of what I'm hearing and I don't know if, if that's, you know, where the council wants to land. Because again, we have occasionally done it, and occasion is really occasion.
And Mr. Nary, that, that is, that was the heart of where I was going when we brought this up earlier was, do you, would this council support the concept plan that's not tied to this? Do you support, um, that concept at this location? I think even the applicant hearing that information would help them to, regardless of whatever, whatever action you do take, whether or not it's, because if you don't like that storage in that location for this purpose, you know, you could tie the concept plan back to this and deny it. Or you can make a statement in other ways. But I think that's the, the heart of what staff probably ultimately needs is what you do want to see, if not, or if you don't want to see that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like staff has mentioned that the highest and best use for this, this piece of property isn't storage units and for that purpose they're wanting to proceed as presented. So that's where I have a little bit of a concern with is if this isn't the highest and best use for this piece of property and that's what staff believes, I'm sort of confused as why you're wanting us to go this other direction. Maybe a little bit more clarification in regard to that.
Councilmember Burt, sorry. Thank you for your question, sir. It, I don't have a good answer as to, I guess going a little bit further back as to what we gain here compared to doing this later. However, it, my main point is to still annex the property, maybe minimize a development agreement modification if we tie it to a concept plan that changes because they deem, oh, no, never mind, we don't want to do self-storage. But at the same time, still gain us some guaranteed industrial zoning and offer us the opportunity to be flexible in the uses that can go there rather than just tying it to a self-storage concept plan. That's the main points. If, if the council deems that annexations cannot occur without a concept plan or plat, I'm not aware of that being in the code, it is a policy decision, yes. Um, I, I'm more than understanding of that and I, I agree with the consistency. I understand that, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
And, and I, I understand, uh, planning's concern about the highest and best use for industrial property because that is something we don't have a lot of. And, and to me, industrial is where we make stuff. I mean, that's the place where we create, purchase raw materials, put things together, um, employ people. Um, and, and this site has rail access, it has excellent access to the freeway. And so I, I can see why they look at this and go, boy, the storage units, that's where we're going to store the stuff that's made. Now where do we make it? Well, we're going to make it in another country? No, let's make it here, if, if we could. So I, I really get that for, for what they're saying about highest and best use. Um, and it might be if this were to come forward as just storage, I don't, you know, it may not have flown before this council. Um, but it, this is kind of unique because we are being asked to annex and to apply a DA with, with those minimal standards for anything that might come forward, we know that would be applied to that property. And what that is that's going to come forward, we don't know, might, as you, as, uh, planning staff pointed out, could be a variety, a mixture of things. So I, I can see why this is not the highest and best use for industrial land. And so it would be nice to see something or work and make something.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I'm going to move that we close the public hearing on item five A, H twenty twenty zero zero three three.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holton.
Second the motion.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, oppose aye? Guys have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Make a motion for, for discussion. I'm going to move that we deny item five A, H twenty twenty zero zero three three.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holton.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to deny the application. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Following up what's been said moments ago, I just, I don't doubt this certainly is going to be industrial land when it's zoned and will probably be wildly successful, but what it actually becomes will determine at the time that the annexation comes forward with its concept plan or plat, whether or not it's assembled with other parcels and comes in as a larger package, whether it has higher and better uses as Councilman Hoagland describes. Um, we, we can cross that bridge when it comes. Again, there's nothing that's, um, no unique benefit to doing the annexation by itself, but there are costs to the city in, in doing it in this fashion. So for, for all of those reasons, I think the motion's appropriate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I agree with that reasoning and I also echo Councilman Hoagland's comments. I, I think if, if just in general I were to be asked, do we want to see just a ton of storage in the precious amount of industrial land that we have on our rail corridor, for me, the answer is no. And hopefully that's a good direction just from one person, but I, I don't believe that that should really be the focus. If it's part of a bigger project, happy to consider it.
Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavener?
Aye.
Perrow?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burt?
Aye.
How lies? Motion to deny passes. Council, we will move on to item five B, uh, public hearing for Sagewood West Subdivision, H twenty twenty dash zero zero three eight. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The project before you is a site that consists of ten point four one acres of land and the request is for an application of annexation zoning with a preliminary plat consisting of fifty-three building lots and seven common lots, one of which is a common drive that serves three homes and acts as the emergency access for the property to the west. The applicant is requesting an R eight zoning designation, which is an allowed designation under the future land use designation of medium density residential. The proposed zoning and density is also consistent with that of the surrounding development. The proposed development is in close proximity to existing employment and shopping centers. Within a half mile is a Walmart, assisted living facility, water park, school, and the commercial intersection of Overland and Meridian Road. These businesses offer both services and employment opportunities within walking distance of this subdivision. Therefore, staff finds that the development to be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan policies and objectives. There is an existing home on the site and will be removed prior to development. The existing home has access to West Overland, but this applicant has elected to close that access. In lieu of an access to Overland, all accesses to this development are proposed via extensions of existing local streets, two from the east and one from the south. In addition to these accesses, staff has recommended a condition of approval to make the proposed common driveway also an emergency access for the adjacent parcel to the west. Staff is currently processing a land use application for a commercial development on the property to the west and an emergency access is a requirement of its proposed use. That application involves a rezone and is proposing to change the zoning from residential to commercial. But there is no guarantee that that application will be approved and the existing residential zoning could remain. Therefore, staff's condition of approval regarding this access is based on whether the parcel to the west develops as commercial or residential. Staff and the applicant have worked together to write a condition that is amenable to both parties in the interim. In the very southwest corner of the subject site, there is a small sliver of open space, small sliver of open space that they are incorporating into their plat. It is the rear of lot twenty-six block one, which with the revised plat, they have made lot twenty-seven block one and it does not have adequate visibility for emergency or police services. The applicant is incorporating this odd sliver into their plat in order to help the city fix a surveying mistake from the past. In discussions with the applicant, staff has requested this property owner work with the property owner to the west to transfer this area to them. In doing so, this area will no longer be tucked away in a quarter and would be usable space by that property owner to the west. Staff has included a condition of approval for this request and the applicant has agreed to it. The applicant has submitted sample elevations of the single-family homes for this project as depicted in the staff report. The single-family homes are depicted as both single and two-story structures with two car, two-car garages and a variety of finished materials. The homes are also shown with optional enhancements, for example, larger garages or a different master bathroom layout. The submitted sample elevations appear to meet the design requirements for single-family homes. As with all preliminary plats over five acres, a minimum ten percent qualified open space meeting the standards in U D C eleven three G dash three is required for this development. Based on the proposed plat of ten point four acres, a minimum of one point zero four acres of qualified open space should be provided and one site amenity. The applicant is proposing one point two five acres of open space, or approximately twelve percent, consisting of common lots with open space, located in larger lots on the end caps of blocks. In addition, the applicant is proposing pathways along the northern property boundary that connect to West Overland Road. The open space lots at the end of the, end of the development provide two amenities, a picnic area with public art and climbing boulders. The other proposed open space within the north area of the development contains the micro pathway and added pedestrian access to Overland Road. Prior to the commission meeting, the applicant addressed a condition regarding the linear open space behind those lots in the north, lots one through ten, and the emergency access to the adjacent property to the west. They revised the plat and this area of open space now appears to meet the open space requirements and should be included in the open space calculations. To be clear, the revised plat will satisfy staff's questions surrounding the amount of qualified open space. The revised landscape plan and open spaces exhibit should be provided to ensure congruency in all plans. Staff and fire have agreed with the location of the emergency access and its dimensions as well. That emergency access, again, is that common driveway in the northwest corner of the site. As you can tell, between this plat and the open space exhibit where the pathway was in, along the northern boundary has changed. They are now, they took some of those lots, one, two, and three, took some of the rear of their lots away and connected that pathway all the way through in order to count that area for open space. On May twenty-eighth, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard these items and recommended approval of the subject applications. The key issues of discussion were the location and layout of the open space and amenities within, in the subject site and in relation to the adjacent subdivision to the east, which is Sagewood subdivision. The applicant's request to modify staff's conditions regarding changing the lot depths and adding landscaping to the northernmost lot, lot eleven block one, and location of the proposed common drive and its purpose also serving as an emergency access to the parcel to the west. Uh, commission recommended changing condition two B and three C, and then to delete condition two C since the condition had been satisfied with the revised plat. The outstanding issue for counsel, as, um, slightly mentioned before, is condition two E, which was the applicant was conditioned to convey lot twenty-seven block one, the odd sliver, uh, to the property owner to the west prior to the, to this hearing, but it has not yet done this. There was not enough time there. Um, the applicant intends to comply with this, with this condition, but ran out of time. Uh, staff is understanding of this and prior to the development agreement being signed, this will have to take place. So, uh, the members of the council can recommend changing that condition to help allow the applicant more time to take care of that. Um, with that, staff recommends approval of the subject applications and stands for questioning.
Thank you, Joe. Council any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, I guess a question for staff. Um, have we received any communication from West Ada regarding this application? I did not see a letter from them. I understand they may be trying to get their data gathering, uh, organized over there. Uh, but is there any kind of update that they provided?
Councilwoman Schrader, members of the council, uh, unfortunately, no. I did not get any updated, uh, numbers from them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Joe, could you go over again this, uh, challenge with the access for the property to the west? And help me understand, um, what it is that, uh, I have concerns that that's not resolved, I guess, before we make a decision this evening. So hopefully the applicant has addressed that and will be able to share that with us in their testimony. But if they haven't, um, then what is the staff's feeling in regard to whether we would continue and wait, uh, to hear from them? Or is there a comfort level on the staff's part that, that could be taken care of and, and we could potentially move forward if, if there is a, a yes vote?
Councilwoman Perrow, uh, thank you. Staff is comfortable with the way that the revised plat has been designed as well as the existing condition in the staff report, uh, that will change the type of access that they would be needing if the property to the west, if their future application to you, uh, is not approved. I don't know if I'm allowed to share more of the details about what that is because they're not being heard tonight. But it is currently zoned residential R eight, but they want to rezone it to commercial because these properties along Overland have both, uh, future land use designations. The proposed use that they have or they are hoping for requires an emergency access. And because the property is to the south and the west and directly to the west of that, of the property directly to the west of this site, those are all developed. So there's no way to gain that emergency access. This is the only avenue for them to do that. And so it was gracious of this applicant to work with them and turn that common drive into an emergency access. Um, that question semi came up in the Planning and Zoning Commission where they were recommended for approval previously on that application. And the distance, this is not a fire requirement for this emergency access. It is a planning requirement. So there is no need to have the required separation that would normally be there. So that is why staff is comfortable with its location. Um, and it will be ballard, it will have ballards, it will have all of the same things to keep all kinds of traffic from there. And only if there's an emergency will it be used.
Council, any further questions? I invite the applicant to come forward and state their name and address for the record, and Scott, you're up. You're recognized for fifteen minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heath Clark, two fifty-one East Front Street in Boise. And let me see if I can get my screen to share now. There we go. Okay, so this applicant, or it's, excuse me, this application is a, is a great infill project located near Overland Road. It has convenient access to shopping, schools, parks, and the Meridian Road freeway interchange. A, a couple of details about the layout and the, the project itself. The proposals, as Joe mentioned, is for fifty-three residential units on ten point four one acres. Uh, it's proposed with an R eight zone. Uh, that's, that is all, uh, exactly within what is identified in the comprehensive plan for this location. Um, this is a true infill project. Uh, there are always challenges associated with infill. And I think that the applicant's done a great job with this one. So a couple of things that I would emphasize as you look at the layout. One is that the applicant has agreed not to take access onto Overland Road. Uh, I think that's a big deal. Uh, instead, the site is designed around three existing internal stub streets from the Fall Creek subdivision on the south and the Sagewood subdivision on the east. Uh, I, I point out that in, in many ways, this is a lot like a, a new phase of the Sagewood subdivision. It matches the density with a slight transition to what we understand is likely to be a commercial project to our west. Um, and as Joe mentioned, it's my understanding that that application is in and there was a recommendation of approval from P and Z. So that's, that is not just a, a plan that, that is something that is actually actively being considered by the city. Um, and let me move on to talk about, a little bit about the amenities. As Joe mentioned, we are in excess of what is required by code. Uh, we will have a pedestrian pathway as well as a pedestrian connection to Overland Road. Uh, we will have common area art in the seating area as well as, as climbing boulders. And, and I want to be clear about what those are. You know, climbing boulders are, are specifically designed to be able to be a child, a vanity. They're not just, you know, it's not just dropping a rock in the middle of your open area and calling it amenity. Um, they are designed to be something that would be fun and useful for the, the residents of the subdivision. Um, as I mentioned, this is much like Sagewood to our east. Uh, we are in discussions with them about potentially annexing into their HOA, which would be great for everyone from a inefficiency perspective. Um, we've tried to choose amenities that are complimentary as a result of that. But, uh, we do also stand on our own and we don't require that annexation in order to be able to move forward. Uh, I do always like to show you all, you know, some of the work that's gone into making the projects better through conversations with staff. And one item that we did work through was this pathway on the north and northeast boundary of the project. As you can see, that path is constrained by the hardened drain as well as the location of West Flower Garden Street, which had, where there was an existing stub there, which led to kind of a, a short edge on the property. Um, what you see on the screen and what's on the revised plat that Joe described is the solution that we all came up with. The element that we are working through now is discussions with Nampa Meridian Irrigation District to allow for some trees on the far side of the pathway. So on the other side of the drain, on the, the subdivision side of that path. Um, that's something that we've been successful in negotiating in the past and expect that that would, um, be the same here. Uh, with regard to the property to the west, uh, again, that, that emergency access is not something that's required for us. We have three stubs already, um, but that is something that we have discussed with the, with that neighbor and, and they were in agreement with that emergency access location. And again, we understand that that project is, is moving forward through the city. So I, I will wrap up with just kind of, to mention again, that the, the project density does comply with the comprehensive plan designation of medium density residential. There are no waivers of standards or variances that have been requested here. Uh, it is true infill. I think it's great for the city and we would hope for your approval. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you for that presentation, Heath.
Yep.
Did I understand correctly that this will be part of a broader homeowners association within Sagewood? And that the residents will have access to the amenities for each section?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perrow, that is the intent and we have had conversations with their HOA board. Um, obviously, uh, everybody wants to know that we have a real project before people put pen to paper to, to memorialize that and, and put it in stone. Uh, but that is what we expect is that the, the subdivisions, if this would act like a phase two of Sagewood and folks would have access to all the amenities.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up if I may.
Councilman Perrow.
The reason I ask is because, um, I, I've been selling homes for many years and I've, I've never had an applicant ask, uh, for amenity regarding climbing rocks. And I'm not familiar with them as a neighborhood amenity. Um, and I'm curious if, um, the applicant had considered any other amenity possibilities. And typically, um, you know, most of the time in Meridian, um, our developers have done great at providing excellent amenities. They're aware that that's something that's important to us. And I don't oftentimes make recommendations for specific amenities. Um, but in this situation, because of the location, there's, there, there is a park that's down around the corner, um, near Bear Creek. Uh, however, there, there really aren't a lot of options for children in this area to, to play. And so I, in this situation, I do have concerns that that may not be substantial enough.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perrow, so I, 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 I think I understand where you're coming from. I, I would just state that count, that this idea of climbing boulders is actually quite popular. Um, we're finding that it, it is a use that folks, uh, it's actually getting, it has more of a, of a lifespan of use than your, your typical tot lot. Um, we, we are seeing them used, you know, I've seen them with a number of clients, you know, throughout the valley. Um, and had, they've, they've worked great for, as a children's amenity, uh, from that perspective. So, um, I would just say that that's, uh, that's something that I, I think it's, it's a qualifying amenity. I think it's market-driven. And our read of the market is that these, these are something that satisfy exactly what Councilmember Perrow is trying to address.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, I, I don't usually chime in on amenities either. I personally, I'm a fan of them because, um, I think it's rare now for kids to get risk-based play, which is really important for their development, and this is really something different. Um, so I'm not opposed to them at all. Uh, I have some concerns about the location of the open space. And, uh, maybe if you could maybe comment a little more around the choice of the locations for those open space areas and the wider vision in there. I don't, I just don't feel like they're very centralized.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, we like to have, you know, entries to the, the developments that are open and inviting. And so that's part of why we like to have, why we would like to have that open space there. Um, but I, I would just be clear that they are fenced in. There is, there's safety that's kept in mind with, with all of this. And, uh, I would also point out that we, the, the amenities are both on the top and the bottom of the project. So the people are able, you know, if you want to get out to Overland, you know, you're going to the appropriate location to do that. If you want to take advantage of the play amenities, you'd be going away from the transportation corridor. Um, it's a, it's a small development. You know, we're talking about, you know, ten acres total. Um, it is not a, it's not a long jaunt for anybody to get to the, to the open space.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just one question. Heath, on that condition one E, that reference that sliver on the southwest corner. Um, it sounds like that efforts have been made and it's almost resolved, not yet resolved. What would, would you recommend to be the, the trigger date or due date of accomplishing that task? That would be included in one E, kind of memorialized when that has to occur.
Uh, yeah, Councilmember Borton, or Mr. Mayor, um, it, that's a, it's a good question. Um, you know, one thing to keep in mind is that I believe that our neighbor to the west is in the, in the county still. Um, so, uh, yeah, excuse me, he's in the city. We're, yeah, I got that backwards. So, um, what we had envisioned, and it's probably six of one, half dozen of the other in terms of how this actually gets taken care of. What we had envisioned was just plat it and convey that lot. That doesn't create an illegal split or do anything along those lines. And then they can do a, a lot consolidation to just absorb it. Um, I think that's the easiest thing to do, you know, and maybe we just are required to, to, uh, convey in connection with our development agreement recording or, you know, somewhere, something along those lines. To me, that, um, you know, we, we are making the commitment to, to address that. You know, the, the logistics, I think, are pretty straightforward and can be taken care of either, either way. Uh, to me, it makes more sense just to plat it and convey the lot itself.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions at this time? Thank you, Heath. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Mr. Clark, do we have anybody sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have nobody signed up for this.
Okay, we have nobody in the room. Is there anybody who is, uh, online that would like to provide testimony on this item? If so, if you could indicate by raising your hand, using the button at the bottom of the Zoom platform. Seeing nobody who would like to provide testimony on this item. Mr. Clark, do you have any last comments you'd like to make?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, not at this time unless there's other questions.
Okay. Well, then, counsel, turn this back over to you. Are any further discussion or comments or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I agree with Councilwoman Schrader's, um, comments about the location of the, um, of, of the open space. I'm not a fan of how it's set up. I'd really like to see something more centralized as well. Um, but also realize that it is a small project, so it's not as if these are going to be, um, the open spaces are going to be far away from each other. Um, but I wouldn't mind actually hearing from Mr. Clark before we close the public hearing if there was consideration made for any other locations for those open spaces.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perrow, you know, we, we, we look at all of those various alternatives. I think, you know, something to keep in mind is that if, if you move the, the common area to the, to the middle of the project, um, what you end up having when you enter the project is, you know, you're either looking at the front or backs of houses. And it, and it makes for a, a less descript project. Uh, you know, in this case, you, you get a, as you, as you're driving into the project and get a much better feel in our view of, of what the project's all about and what the theme of it should be. And we don't, you know, what you're talking about... And we don't, you know, what you're talking about is, you know, the a difference of walking the distance of five or six, you know, lots, um, to to get to that area on the south. So from our perspective, it it makes for a a better, more marketable project if we have it in an area that's that functions also as an entry.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Strater.
Maybe I'll kick off a little bit of discussion. Um, would have hoped, obviously going forward, I think we're we're hoping to get data and input from West Data. I'm kind of torn. I'm I'm really hesitating to to even approve projects if they're not providing input. On the other hand, this is an infill project and it's a relatively small unit count, which maybe leads me to make an exception to not punish this one applicant while we give West Data a reasonable amount of time to to provide some more input. Um, but I'd be curious as to the rest of Counsel's opinion on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Cavanagh.
Counselwoman Strater, I think your, I think your concern is valid. Um, but I I think that it is not, um, the applicant's responsibility to ensure that another jurisdiction provide non-required comment. Um, I think the district is well aware of our response to feedback from the citizens, from their patrons, from the district themselves about the impact of development on classroom size. And if they chose not to send something to us, it's it's disappointing, but I'm I'm not in a place that I think that we need to slow or or penalize, for lack of a better word, the applicant because of that. Um, you're right, it is a small infill project. I'm pleased that they're, they're taking, they're not taking their access off of Overland. Um, it complements the area nicely. Uh, my hope is, is that the neighbors uh, to the east would want to join up and this really does become kind of a delphic, a second phase. Um, I I don't see any compelling reason to deny this project. I'm supportive of it and happy to.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Strater.
Yeah, I I'm leaning toward the same thought process in terms of this application. Again, based on the fact that it's clearly infill, which we need, and it's also a small unit count. I guess my my hesitation, the challenge that I'm seeing is, um, if this was a much, much bigger project, if this was hundreds of units, um, I I think I'd have a really hard time taking the same view. So maybe it's an order of magnitude for me, but I I do think for very large projects, we'd have to have that input at least for me to feel comfortable. But I agree with you on this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
I understand that Mary McPherson is the elementary school. It is going, undergoing an expansion right now. Um, I don't recall off the top of my head what that is going to allow for student count. I am aware that Hillsdale Elementary is is busking some of their students to Mary McPherson. I don't know how that's going to end up playing out for this school year. Um, I think that this project would actually be within the boundaries of, um, the new elementary school that would be proposed if a bond were to get passed. I can't say that for sure. I'm not a member of West Data, but I believe that's the case. So it's possible that the students would only be at, um, Mary McPherson for a couple of years. But what I wanted to specifically say is that, um, and to to let Mr. Clark know if he, I imagine he's a busy man and he doesn't, isn't paying attention to every conversation we're having about the school district. But, um, I I know myself and some of, some of the other council members in our conversations with, um, developers and, um, uh, different representatives of developers in the area, we have asked them to help us to encourage the school district to give us clarity on, um, what we can do to respond to our residents who are, who are very strongly saying their concerns regarding, oh, um, schools, especially ele- elementary schools being over capacity. And so, um, I, we feel like, I should say, I, myself as a council member, I can't speak for my other council members, I feel like we have, um, been vocal with West Data and done what we could do to ask for them to make the changes that they are able to make. And we're really hoping that we can get a community effort to encourage the district to do the same.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, hold on.
Yeah, just to, uh, concur with, uh, Councilman, uh, Cavanagh's remarks. I think he laid it out very well about this project and, uh, and I can, I can move forward with that.
Counsel, any further comments or is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Borden.
I don't think we closed the public hearing yet, did we?
No, we have not.
We closed the public hearing on item five B, H twenty twenty zero zero three eight.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Borden.
I think there's, uh, very sound and wise comments by counsel that make sense to support approving this project. Um, an additional comment is, I think, the inclusion of of common area art is to be commended. I think it's, I love seeing it, probably don't see enough of it around, so I appreciate that as an additional part of this project. Um, I move that we approve H twenty twenty zero zero three eight as presented, uh, in the staff report dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item H twenty twenty dash zero zero three eight. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Clark will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Item number six A is ordinance number twenty dash one eight eight five. Uh, I will have the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance related to H two thousand twenty zero zero two nine Midgrove Plaza, for rezone of a parcel of the land, being a portion of that parcel described in warranty deed instrument number one 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 zero six nine four eight one Ada County records, and also being a portion of parcel one, as described in Meridian City Ordinance number seven four eight. Recorded as instrument number nine six one zero four seven nine zero, Ada County records. Aligning within the east half of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section seven township three north, range one east Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of one point nine six three acres of land from IL Light Industrial Zoning District to CG General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this item read by title. Would you or any member of the staff, like your public, like to have it read in its entirety? Hearing not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, hold on.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, uh, I would move that we approve ordinance number twenty dash one eight eight five with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the item under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Clark will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. We've reached item number seven under future meeting topics. Counsel, anything for future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Strater.
I think I alluded to this earlier, um, and hopefully under our emergency, we can touch on. It's pretty clear from watching the Central District Health meeting that they have, um, passed a a mask, um, order for Ada County. Um, you know, I I wanted some flexibility tonight because I I have been vocal and feel strongly that, um, we're in unfortunate circumstances where to protect the health of our community, some type of a mask requirement is necessary for those that can wear them. Um, that being said, you know, I, we may want to consider, and I I'd be curious if people would be interested in a future meeting topic, perhaps on a more urgent special meeting basis. But in listening to their meeting, it it became clear to me that, um, while they passed the mask order, they clearly had reservations because my understanding is that under state law, an order from a mayor or an order from Central District Health can only be done if it becomes a misdemeanor. And so my understanding is that that could result in up to six months in jail, could result in up to a thousand dollar fine. Um, certainly, it's a very serious penalty for a situation that even the folks in that meeting touched on a situation where education should come first. Um, I would be curious if in order to support, uh, the Central District Health mask order, we might consider an ordinance, uh, as a city, that as long as their order is in place, um, we we would consider, uh, a process of implementing it, uh, as an infraction. I feel that if Meridian were to support, uh, compliance, it would actually help the effort to get people to wear their masks. And I think it would provide a more efficient enforcement mechanism, hopefully one that started with education first by the Meridian Police Department and then possibly resulted in an infraction and some type of a fine as opposed to a full-on, uh, misdemeanor. Again, in support of their order and in the hopes, I think, of getting a better compliance for the, from the community. That was my thought.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I guess maybe a question either for you or Council President or Mr. Nary. Uh, Councilmember Strater at least touched on on a sooner than rather than later approach to this. What options or mechanics do we have to move this forward as a future meeting topic? With at least having the possibility of not waiting until next Tuesday to discuss.
Mr. Nary, how can counsel call a special meeting if they would like to?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Cavanagh, so you you do have the ability to call a special meeting. Um, I believe it requires twenty-four hours' notice, uh, or it's forty-eight. I don't have the ordinance statute in front of me. There is a time period that's required before you can hear it, so it would be closer to the end of the week. Uh, you can, let me break it down a little bit because I I'm afraid I potentially may have misled Councilmember Strater on this topic to some degree. State law allows the Central District Health to order, under the health order requirements, allows them to order what they've ordered tonight. It is a misdemeanor under state code. The mayor currently has independent authority to order that same thing as you've seen over in Boise. Where Mayor McLean has ordered that prior to Central District Health, it also is a misdemeanor. Under the state code, the cities are allowed to establish their own infractions, like parking tickets and dogs violations off-leash, such as that. So we have the ability to create a, an infraction, but we can't make the state law the infraction. We would have to make a city order the infraction. So it would require the mayor to issue a city order that then could be, could be created as an infraction offense that could be a citable offense. So it would require an order by the mayor and then an ordinance by the city council that a violation of that order would be an infraction. To pass an ordinance, you are required to have three readings, which can be collapsed into one hearing if you wish. So you're allowed to do that. It then has to be published. We publish in the Meridian Press, which is published on Fridays. So we have to give them notice ahead of time. At the minimum, they require forty-eight hours' notice to even be able to publish it in any form. Normally, it's a ten-day period for it to publish in their usual legal notices section. But we have, we have published it in other sections of that paper on occasion when necessary. So minimum of, and I apologize that I can't recall, it was, I believe it's forty-eight hours for a regular meeting. It's only twenty-four hours for an emergency executive session. So you would have a couple of days before you could have a meeting. You would have the discussion, again, if you wanted public input, it's a little tight timeframe in which to do that. And then you would have to publish, and again, it wouldn't be posted, earliest and possibly published at this juncture would be next Friday, which is the twenty-fourth.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Counsel, I'm Cavanagh.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And Counsel, I, I, I'm just going to make, when you look across our country, a lot of folks have differing opinions on on a mask mandate. That may dislance our counsel, but I think one thing that we probably are all united on is that a a misdemeanor charge, thousand dollar fine, potential six months in jail, while even unlikely, is not, uh, the right approach to to handle this type of an order. Um, furthermore, I think at least giving our citizens the opportunity to provide public testimony and their opinion on this to us is something that, um, I wish the health district would have done, but recognize they didn't have the ability to do that. So I I'm supportive of of a special meeting about this. If we can, um, take the lightest hand of government when it comes to this particular approach, um, that does encourage education, I do believe the vast majority of our citizens want to do the right thing. Um, and for those that either are unaware, um, or aren't complying, I don't think that potential jail sentence is is the right way to educate the public. Uh, so I'm supportive of that. Um, I think it's the right approach. Um, and I would support of us meeting in a special meeting setting sooner rather than later, uh, to formalize.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so Mr. Johnson was quick on the, on the research. So a special meeting can be held with at least twenty-four hours' notice. It said less than emergency exists, so counsel would have to determine if it was less than twenty-four hours that there was an emergency. Um, if I recall in the state code, because I think we looked at this before, the emergencies are very, very narrowly defined. And I don't know if this would qualify without looking at that to the different section of the code. But I I would suggest using at least twenty-four hours' notice, just to be cautious.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Nary. Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, so it is, it is seven twenty-eight PM right now. Does that mean that if we wanted to meet at seven thirty tomorrow, we would have to move in the next ninety seconds? Or are, is there flexibility in terms of if we wanted to meet? Again, I'm not, I don't know where counsel wants to go on this, but if we wanted to meet tomorrow at six, has, has that opportunity already passed?
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Johnson's put up the particular provision of the code. And again, it says an emergency is injury or damage to persons or property, immediate financial loss or the likelihood of such injury, damage, or loss when the notice requirements would make such notice impractical or increase the likelihood or severity of injury, damage, or loss. That's, that's the basis of an emergency to be less than twenty-four hours. So it's your decision, Counsel, if you think the necessity to be in less than twenty-four hours fits that category. If it's those specific language in the code.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
If I understood, Mr. Nary correctly, even if we have the meeting tomorrow evening, we still wouldn't be able to get an ordinance published this Friday. Is that right?
But in my experience, Mr. Johnson would know better than I. He's the one that handles that relations with them. It would, it would be a pretty tight turnaround to have an ordinance to you by tomorrow, but we could. And for you to then approve it tomorrow, Wednesday night, and get them to publish something on Friday. And I don't know what their timing would allow that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, uh, Mr. Nary is correct. It generally, we generally send, um, notices tomorrow for the following Friday with Meridian Press, um, in order to get it in their legal section. We have at times, under the gun, had to, uh, publish in the Idaho Statesman. And whether or not that would be appropriate is, you know, really of a legal opinion, I wouldn't speak to that. It would be definitely pushing. I don't know that they would be able to get that published Friday. Even if we gave it to them tomorrow evening.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt. What I hear is a lot of, I think, mechanical solutions or mechanical challenges that we can work through. I think twenty-four hours is sufficient. So I would move that we schedule special meeting for tomorrow at seven thirty PM to discuss the city's response to Central District Health's mask mandate and, um, to discuss a potential ordinance around.
Second. If I can second, I don't know.
Yeah, are we about to take motions at this point in time?
What?
Mr. Nary?
So, Mr. Members of the council.
I've tried to be very, give a lot of latitude.
Yeah.
Something under something I don't think we should be talking about, but it's fine.
This is a future meeting topic.
Correct, this is about.
This is not action items.
Right.
You, but you can call a special meeting. It doesn't say in the code that it can't be done in a meeting or done outside of the meeting. At this juncture, I would put it later than seven thirty because it's seven thirty-one on my watch and on the city's clock here. But you can call a special meeting without it being a motion. I, I, I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor. This is probably not the forum to do it, but if the direction or desire of the council is to have a special meeting, ultimately, the decision on holding a meeting is yours.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Holton, to talk about this as a future meeting topic, um, in that order that was up for a little while, um, that was just signed by Central District Health Director, it talks about in item nine that the city may enact more stringent health orders than those set out in this order, referring to their order. Is that, uh, you have to wear a mask to bed? Is that more stringent? Is, is the fine itself part of the order? It's in state code, so can we only go more stringent or we can go lesser for the fine or misdemeanor?
So lots of unproven ground here, so in my opinion, again, I think you're exactly right, though the, the, on the first step, the city can always be more restrictive. The city can also pass the same directive as well, so that's independently, the mayor has that authority. So you can be more restrictive or the same if you wish. What we'd be creating is an ordinance that says if you violate the mayor's order, it's an infraction. So you're not, you're really not even addressing the state, the, the Health District's order any longer. All you would be enforcing is the mayor's order if he were to order that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So it sounds to me like the first, if a special meeting were to be held, the first thing we need to discuss is, is whether the mayor, the mayor would need to share with us whether he would be comfortable issuing that, otherwise there's no point in council, uh, hearing an ordinance.
Well, Mr. Members of the council, not necessarily. I mean, again, the mayor doesn't have to make that decision now. The first step is, basically, the council is asking, would the mayor consider scheduling a special meeting, whether it's tomorrow night at seven forty-five or Thursday at six? The decision to hold, the, the way the state code is drafted, the decision to hold a meeting is the mayor's. The decision on the topics of the meeting is initially the mayor, but the council has the authority by a majority to also change or set the agenda of the meeting. So the first step really is whether the mayor's going to issue the order or not, it really is whether the mayor's willing to call a special meeting at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I wanted to find out from Deputy Chief Bastard Chia if, if, I, I, we didn't hear the whole meeting, we just heard a snippet of it. Some of the laws, like the, uh, uh, cell phone law the state passed this year, they gave an, in, uh, for enforcement, there was a period of warnings and not bring the hammer down right away. Is there, was there anything done in this situation that you're aware of or does law enforcement, does Meridian Police Department have that ability to give warnings, uh, early on in the process till people understand that this is a required, uh, to wear a mask?
Councilman Holton, members of the council. The answer to that is yes. Um, I don't know of any city that is, has issued a misdemeanor citation for any of these violations that, uh, they've already implemented. So yes, we can do that. I can tell you that as a department, we would certainly, if you want to enforce this strictly, we would prefer a infraction as opposed to a misdemeanor citation. One, the courts are already backed up, um, because of this whole COVID nineteen, uh, mess, and this is just going to clog those up even more so. And the other thing you have to ask yourself is, how willing are you as the council to take that heat as well? We've already dealt with some COVID nineteen things a, as an agency and, and we were inundated, um, with the, uh, the, uh, hate emails and, and Facebook posts, and we're used to that. I don't know that, uh, you all are quite used to that, but, uh, it would be coming. We would certainly rather, if we're going to be very strict on enforcement, have the opportunity to write citations for infractions rather than misdemeanors. Our goal is to educate from the very beginning. It doesn't matter, even when we, uh, implemented our cell phone ordinance long before the state ordinance, we took a period of time, almost, I believe, almost two months to, um, educate the public before our, uh, we started writing citations for that. So education's always the, the very first goal. Enforcement is our last goal a, as an agency. We want to go education, prevention, and then enforcement as a last step.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I, I think Deputy Chief Bastard Chia nailed it on the head. I think first and foremost, the role of our police department going forward in regard to this, this order by, uh, Central District Health is to educate, period. Period. We, I, I can't guarantee, you know, citations or misdemeanor, whatever, but I highly doubt that our police department is going to be out and about writing tickets, you know, and in, in, in doing what, um, the deputy chief just mentioned in regard to misdemeanor citations. It's just not going to happen. I'm just going to be honest. I'll, I'll say it, it's not going to happen. And, and so to have this conversation, I, I personally wouldn't support, um, a, a special meeting to discuss this because it, it's going to be very difficult to enforce something that's unenforceable. So that's my thought.
And ca, council, I've tried to give a lot of latitude, but I would like to bring this to a close. If, if there's more conversation about this, it should be done under a, a notice agenda topic, um, from that perspective. So is there anything else under future meeting topics for consideration? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I guess be, before we, we vote, we, are, are we scheduling a special meeting? Is that happening? Is that not? What's? What is, what is the point?
I'll have a conversation with it, I'll have a conversation with the council president of whether or not that should be scheduled or not.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, it's signed by by Saint Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
You're adjourned.